This is the Thursday, April 14th, 2016, meeting of the Zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals. Could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Vig.
Here.
Mr. Cars.
Here.
Ms. Iker.
Here.
Ms. Dole.
Here.
Ms. McKay.
Here.
Mr. Ayers.
Here.
Ms. Jaron has been excused. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we proceed with our, um, the agenda, we have item C2, Annual Election of Officers. If there's no objection to the board, I'd consider an amendment to move that to the end of the agenda. Is there any objection to that? Seeing none, we'll move C2 to, uh, after our public hearing. We have minutes from the February 11th, 2016, meeting for approval. Has everyone had a chance to review those minutes? Is there any, um, discussion? Ms. McKay, you've indicated motion to approve.
Approve.
Thank you. And Mr. Vig, you've seconded?
I do.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on approval of the minutes? Any objection? Okay, seeing none, the minutes are approved. Item C2 disclosures. Do we have any disclosures this evening by any of the board members? Seeing none, we have no disclosures. We're therefore on to our consent agenda. We have two resolutions for approval, Resolution 2016-002 and 2016-004. If I could have a motion to approve those two resolutions. Mr. Ayers.
I ask, Mr. Chair, I move to approve. Do you have case number, uh, Resolution Number 20, 2016-002 and Resolution 2016-004?
Thank you, Ms. Ayers. Ms. Iker, you've indicated you would second that?
I do.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to pull any of the cases from the consent agenda? Seeing none, could we vote on approval of the resolution to approve? Oh, I'm sorry. Is there any opposition to approval? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. We're therefore on to, um, we have no appearance requests, which is item E on our agenda, no other unfinished businesses, unfinished business, which is F. There are no items under G under our regular agenda. Brings us to item H, our public hearings. Before we hear our first case this evening, I would like to read the order of business for our variance hearings. The chair shall introduce the variance and explain the procedure to be followed. The variance case number and the name of the applicant shall be read into the record. The board shall hear and rule on any objections to the sufficiency of notice. The board shall hear a brief staff presentation outlining the variance, not to exceed 10 minutes. On conclusion of the staff presentation, the board members and the applicant may then direct questions to the staff through the chair. The applicant shall give his or her presentation, not to exceed 10 minutes. Throughout the proceedings, the burden of proof rests upon the applicant, who must convince the board by a preponderance of the evidence, that the variance should be granted. On conclusion of the applicant's presentation, the board members and the staff may then direct questions to the applicant through the chair. The hearing shall then be open for public testimony. Each person has three minutes. All persons who testify may be questioned by the board, staff, or the applicant. On conclusion of the public testimony, the staff, followed by the applicant, shall have the right of rebuttal. This shall last no more than three minutes each. The board shall proceed to develop oral findings and conclusions with regard to the variance and disposition of the variance. The staff shall reduce the oral findings and conclusions to writing for subsequent adoption by the board at a later meeting. The matter then rests with the board, and the chair asks for a positive motion from the board. Before, one other item before we have our first case, I was asked at the end of our last meeting if board members could make sure we speak clearly and, and, I don't know if loudly is the right terms. We don't want to break anybody's eardrums, but please project into the microphone with your comments so that members of the public can hear our comments. First case this evening, 2016-0026. The petitioner is Larry Gully. So the petitioner and/or his representative here this evening, they've indicated they're present. Could staff provide us with a sufficiency of notice, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sixty public hearing notices were mailed by the planning department to the public, all the properties within 500-foot radius of the petition site and to a minimum of 50 properties. Um, we mailed those on March 15th of this year. One public comment, public hearing notice was returned with comment in opposition to the granting of the variance, and that's been laid on the table for you this evening. I'll point you to that. No comments were received from the Hillside East Community Council.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Could you proceed with your presentation?
Um, this is a, an application for a zoning variance for a minimum lot area in the R6 Rural Residential District. This application is submitted under the new code, and there are, I believe it's eight standards of approval now. So, very similar, but slightly different standards. Um, this is a request for variance from the Dimensional Standards residential districts to allow the creation of a lot that does not meet the minimum lot area in our sixth district. The minimum lot area is 43, 560 square feet, one acre. And the resulting lot, when these two lots are combined into one, will be 30,600 square feet, so approximately 13,000 square feet short of the minimum lot area. The lots were legally created prior to current zoning regulations, and combining the two lots into one property will bring the property closer to conformity with a minimum lot area requirements. The existing house encroaches into the north side setback and the, um, the rear setback. In regards to the standards of approval, the department finds the first standard, A, is met. The lots were legally created prior to zoning in 1964. The request is to combine the two lots into one, which would bring the resulting lot closer to conformity with current code. And that is the objective of the code, is to move closer to conformity with the regulations. Standard B is also met. Strict application of the, the regulations for minimum lot area would deprive the property owner of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same zoning district. He would like to increase the size of his lot in order to construct a detached garage, which is a common right of enjoyment in this district. Standard C is met. The direction of this variance is towards conformity. Standard D, the standard is met. No structure, separation issues or violations, drainage runoff don't appear to be issues. Standard E is met. The variance will not change the character of the zoning district. Standard F is met. There's no identified health, safety issues with the property. The owner is seeking to build a detached garage, which is a permitted accessory use in the R6 district. Standard G is, is, is met. This is not an issue of ADA accessibility or reasonable accommodation. Standard H is met. This is a single-family house that will have a detached garage, which is a common right of enjoyment. Allowing the lots to be combined would obviate the need for variances for encroachments upon construction of the garage. The department finds that all the standards are met and recommends approval of the variance, subject to conditions one through three on pages four and five of your packet. Be happy to answer questions, and the petitioner and their, his representative are, are present.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Are there any questions of staff by the board? Yes, Ms. Dole?
Uh, yes. Uh, I, through the chair, I noticed that the department recommendation, number one, refers to the variance allowing a creation of a lot that is, and it says, "as shown on as-built" dated December 15, 2015. But we had a, a new as-built laid in front of us this evening. Now, it does have a date of survey, 12/14, 15 to 12/15, 15, but I just wanted to ask if you'd clarify the reference to the as-built on staff recommendation, number one, on the...
Through the chair, Ms. Dole. That's an excellent question. I hadn't considered that. I haven't actually studied the, the new as-built. There weren't enough copies. So, maybe I'll take a look at it, or maybe Mr. Hale can, the petitioner's representative can speak to what the difference is, and whether it makes sense to update the condition of approval to reflect the new as-built.
Yeah.
That, that may be necessary, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Dole. Are there any other questions of staff by the Mr. Vig.
Thank you. Through the chair, Mr. McLaughlin. The, uh, the setback requirements, can you walk me through those real quickly for this case?
Um, the R6 district requires, uh, 50-foot front and rear setbacks and 25-foot side setbacks. It's drawn on the as-built, provided. The house encroaches into the side and rear setback. There's a condition of approval requiring the petitioner to establish grandfather rights, non-conforming rights, for those encroachments into the setbacks.
Okay, thank you. I'll, uh, look forward to asking the petitioner about the revised as-built with different setbacks.
I, through the chair, Mr. Vig. I foresee that I overlooked that when, when a lot does not meet the minimum lot area of that district and is legal, like was the case here, then even though the zoning and all of the uses and requirements and that stay the same, the setbacks go by the zoning district that is most similar to the actual size of the lot. So this lot should not be reviewed against the lot setbacks for the R6, which it couldn't meet, because it's this really small lot, 15,000-square-foot lot. It should go by the R1A zoning district setbacks, which are 20-foot front, 5-foot sides, and 10-foot rear. And when you look at the as-built under those setbacks, then the, it meets all of those setbacks.
Okay, that, that helps a lot. You said 20-foot front and not, but not 25?
Uh, 20-foot front.
Okay.
Uh, 5-foot sides, 10-foot rear. And I suspect that's what the as-built shows, but when I passed it out, I neglected to actually look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of staff?
Uh, Mr. McLaughlin, just, I have two questions. One's a follow-up to your, your response to Mr. Vig. If we were to grant this variance and the lot line was to be vacated, the lot would then become 30,000 square feet plus or minus. It's closer in size to the R6-sized lot than it is the R1A then. So how, how does that work? Is it, is it kind of like the Price is Right, you know, less than, but not going over, or is it, um, how does that work when the, um, the lot is less than the required?
You know, I didn't, I didn't even, I overlooked this part of the code where, so I overlooked this, um, this rule that you go by the, the closest size district. I overlooked it. But, uh, I'm not sure if the, it's still smaller than the minimum lot area for the R6 district. Remember, the R6 district, under old code, it was 54,000, um, square feet, but you got to count half the abutting right-of-way. So the new code changed it to, from an acre and a quarter to just an acre. But it's still, you know, 13,000 square feet below it. So I don't know if they continue to go under the R1A district, or if they go under, you know, the R5 or something else. But because of this was legal, um, under, you know, at the time of construction, then I believe that it would still be legal upon the, the lots being put together.
Okay. Thank you. And my second question, we have, uh, a, a comment that was submitted this evening, and perhaps the, the person that submitted the comment is here tonight to speak to it. But I, when I, I read through their comment, it appeared that, um, the, what is going to occur with this application isn't necessarily an increase in density that's being allowed. We're actually getting a larger lot. Am I, to your knowledge, is there something in this comment that I'm misunderstanding or misinterpreting?
No, the public comment is misguided. It doesn't have anything to do with the actual, what, what will occur.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions? Ms. Dole.
Thank you. Through the chair. So, I guess, getting back to what would occur if this variance would not be granted, was, am I correct in thinking that the, um, the owner of the lot that is currently, um, not improved would be able to build a house there?
Yes.
But they can't build a shed there until they build a house, and then there probably wouldn't be enough space for, or a detached garage, sorry?
Yeah. So, they're two separate lots now. So, the, um, the lot that has the house, he could apply for a variance and show the, on the Zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals, the garage that he wants to build, and claim that because he's got this really small lot, that he needs some relief. Um, and with the vacant lot, you have to have a principal use before you have an accessory use. So someone would build a, um, a house, and then they would maybe claim the same things. But, uh, yeah, by denying this, as you rightly pointed out, denying this variance would force these two lots to stay separate and not allow them to be combined. And then you would be guaranteeing that you'd be getting a, an, an additional dwelling unit. So actually, the, the opposite of what the, I think that the neighbor is complaining about would occur. Yeah.
Thank, thank you. Are there any other questions? If not, could the applicant come forward, please? Could you state and spell your name for the record?
My name's Dave Hale, H-A-L-E, with R&amp;M Consultants, representing the Gullies in this.
Thank you, Mr. Hale. You have 10 minutes for your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As staff said, we agree with everything that staff has said. They're, the applicants are simply trying to build a garage. They're going through the process before they build the garage, which I guess could be unusual. They want to make sure that they do all this legally. And so what they're trying to do is get this variance for the lot size. And if we can get that, then they can combine the lots, build the garage, and use the property as the other neighbors in the R6 zoning are, are using it. So, uh, their intentions are good. They're going through the process correctly. We've, uh, we've got a letter, which wasn't included in your, your packet. It was a determination for the legal non-conforming lots. And the, the Muni gave me a letter, which I should have forwarded to Francis. I didn't. But they said that lots two and three are considered legal, conforming lots of record. So, uh, and they've said that, as Francis said, the, uh, the side setbacks are different due to AMC 21.12.050 dot A. Uh, they need to conform with the R1A. So what they have down here for that is minimum lot size are 8,400 square feet. The minimum front yard is 25 feet. The side is five, and the rear is 10. And so what I did is I updated that as-built, so it'd be a little less confusing, so you guys could see it. And I surveyed that, or our crews did, and you'll see that there are no encroachments anymore. And so it's my understanding that this letter will set the setbacks for when we combine these lots as well, and the owners will be able to build a garage that won't encroach into the setbacks and be in conformity completely. As far as the objection, the one objection, it, you know, it speaks about building another house and a well and a septic, and it's not the intention at all. The intention is for a garage. There'll be no other wells. There'll be no second residence. It'll be an accessory use for the garage and then a primary home. And, and that's the intention. And I don't think that, uh, that would impact the neighbors negatively at all. So I can answer any questions that, that you guys may have.
Thank you, Mr. Hale. Are there any questions by the applicant, or to the applicant by Ms. Iker.
Thank you. Through the chair. Mr. Hale, if I just followed your comments correctly about the encroachments and the updated survey that you provide, is it your recommendation that the board consider striking department recommendation number three, establishing non-conforming rights for the encroachments to the north side of the setback and then the rear setback? Because according to the letter that you received from the municipality, there are none under the R1A?
Uh, we can. Uh, there's two ways to deal with that. You can strike that, or I can work with staff, and they can sign that off based on the updated conditions, whatever's
Are there any other questions of, of the petitioner? Ms. Dole?
Uh, thank you. I, I would, I, Mr. McLaughlin, uh, seemed to think that if the two lots were combined and they were, uh, one larger lot, that we might be looking at different setbacks, because we might be looking at a different, you know, instead of R1A, maybe R5 or some other section that more closely, um, approaches, you know, the minimum lot size for the combined lots. So I'm a little bit, I guess, concerned about approving or this survey, because you just said it was based on the setback requirements in lot, in zoning classify, uh, in the R1A district. Um, did you, can, did you look at other districts, zoning districts, or consider that, um, when you came up with this revised as-built survey?
Through the chair, the, what we looked at initially was the worst-case scenario. And so the first as-built you have has the R6, so it's 50-foot, 50-foot, and 25-foot. And what we did was we looked and I asked the Gullies, can you fit a garage in there without encroaching? And they said, yeah. So with those setbacks, they could build a, a garage within that area. If, we expect that, uh, if, if it does change, it's not going to be, you know, as, as, as much as the R6. But if it is, it's enough space.
Okay.
Thank you. And, and, Mr. McLaughlin, just for clarification, with our, whatever action we take tonight, we aren't approving setback requirements. Those are what's established by building safety. And, um, I believe that even the as-built are just, that information would just be for informational purposes only and not approved by us tonight. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of the petitioner? Does staff have any questions?
No, sir.
If not, thank you, Mr. Hale. We'll open this for public testimony. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify? Anyone at all? Seeing and hearing no one, the public, the, um, public hearing is closed. Is there, um, sorry, wait. There's no public testimony to rebut, Mr. Hale, but is there any, is there any rebuttal? He's indicated there's not, Mr. McLaughlin. No, there's no rebuttal. With that, the matter rests with the board. Could I have a positive motion from a board member, please? And I'll just let the board members know the sun is shining, and we need a, a motion before we can leave, so. Mr. Vig.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant a variance from AMC Table 21.06 dash one, Dimensional Standards residential districts, to allow the creation of a lot that does not meet the minimum lot area in the R6 district, subject to department recommendations one through three on pages four and five of the staff packet, with the exception of modifying the date shown in recommendation number one, striking December 15th, 2015, inserting April
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Ms. McKay, you indicated you would second that motion?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. McKay. Mr. Vig, would you speak to your motion, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, uh, go through these quickly. I agree with the staff's presentation and that of the applicant. And, uh, with regard to standard number finding, or, excuse me, standard A, I agree with staff that standard is met. Lots were created prior to legal, prior to zoning with a plat 6429. And this action would bring the resulting lot closer to conformity with the current code. Standard B, I agree with staff that the standard is met. Constructing a detached garage is a common right of enjoyment in Anchorage. Standard C, or, or item C, the standard is met. I agree. It's not a self-imposed situation, and I commend the applicant for coming forward prior to construction and working this out. Um, but I do agree that it's not a self-imposed hardship. And, uh, standard D, that the variance of granted will not affect use of adjacent property. I agree with staff that standard is met. And I, with regard to the public comment that we received tonight, I respectfully, uh, take exception with the, uh, the comment that it effectively decreases the, uh, the density over what could otherwise be, be there if this, if we do not approve the variance. Standard E, I believe the standard is met. Does not change the character of the zoning district. Standard F... Standard F, the variance of granted would not affect health, safety, and welfare of the people of the municipality. I agree with staff that that is met. And with regard to standard G, there are no impediments to providing ADA access or reasonable accommodation if we grant the variance. And standard H, the minimum variance to make use of possible, make possible a reasonable use of the land, reasonable use of the land is to include a detached garage, which is common in R6. And so I agree with staff, those, it's, eight standards are met and intend to support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Ms. McKay.
I concur with staff's findings and Mr. Vig's comments and will support the motion. And I'm particularly pleased that this action will move the property closer to conformance with current code.
Thank you, Ms. McKay. Is there, Ms. Dole?
Thank you. I intend to support the motion as well for the reasons that are, that have been given by staff and my colleagues. I would like to add that it, for the record, my understanding that in doing so, should there be errors in the setback requirements or other things that do not relate to the combination of the two lots into one legal lot, that those would not be affect, that those would, would not be set in stone by the use of this as-built survey as part of the recommendation number one.
Thank you, Ms. Dole. Are there comments from any other board members? If not, please vote. That motion passes by a vote of 6 to 0. I do need to read for the record that every final decision of the board shall clearly state on its face it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case and that the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of decision to file an appeal to the Superior Court. That was our last hearing of the, of the evening. That brings us back to our annual election of officers. I apologize, I didn't read the agenda close enough to even realize that that was coming up until tonight. And I, and it, well, I didn't and I was, I was trying to strong-arm Ms. McKay but into taking over as chair, but I also don't want to put her on the spot without her preparing her speech, so, her acceptance speech. So we can either act on this tonight, think about it for a month or two. It sounds like we don't have a, any cases scheduled for next month at this time. That's subject to change. But I'll tell you my personal opinion. I think it's good to move around and I don't consider this as a chair-for-life position from my end, so I, and if Ms. McKay's interested or anyone else, she's the vice chair and I just thought the logical progression was to move up, but Ms. Aiker is parliamentarian. If you want to step up or, anyone, anyone else. I'm open for anything. I just do think it's a good idea to move around. So my, my thoughts would be to have Ms. McKay move into the chair position, but I don't want to put-
We'd like Mr. Ron, he's not here.
Yes, that's normally how these things work. Yet, what's that? So, am I allowed to nominate this? I can't make a motion, so. Anyway, what's the, what's the wish of the board? Yes, Mr. Vig.
Are you, are you interested in serving, Ms. McKay?
I would serve. It's the will of the group.
Well, I would, glad to nominate Ms. McKay as our chair for the next year.
Good night. Is there a second?
I gotta press the button first.
And Ms. Aiker?
I would be happy to second that motion.
All right. Is there any other nominations for chair? Excuse me?
Any other patsy?
Well, thank you. And, what's that? If there's no objections, I would say Ms. McKay will be the chair. And then we need a vice chair. And Mr. Vig, I sense that you may be our nominating committee, so. Thoughts on vice chair or, anyone can do that. I'm sure Ms. McKay will be at every meeting, so that it'll be just a title.
But we're not having one of them.
Ms. Aiker, would you?
In the spirit of moving up, I would, I would be happy to serve as Ms. McKay's vice chair, so long as you don't pressure me to take on the chair role next year. Okay, that's our understanding and it's on the record.
And that's now on the record, so.
That's how lawyers work.
So I think that that might have been a nomination and a second then from Ms. Aiker and Ms. McKay? Yeah? All right. I think we had Ms. Dole and Mr. Ayers that were on the, on the board showing moved and seconded?
I seconded.
Okay, Ms. Dole?
I move that Ms. Aiker be the vice chair of our board for the next year. I think she would be a great one.
Wonderful. And then parliamentarian. Yes, Ms. McKay?
I nominate Ms. Dole. We're going to be an all-girl.
It's a girl, all-girl alliance. May I have a second, please? Thank you, Ms. McKay. Ms. Dole, you've been nominated and seconded. And I believe it'll be unanimous. Do you have any objection to serving as parliamentarian?
No, unless I have any.
Well, thank you. With that, I believe we have our officers for the next meeting and the next year. Reports, is there any news on a, on a eighth or ninth board member?
I actually had some interest from someone else in my office and I wanted to ask the board if they thought that offhand there would be any, you know, conflict or issue with having two members working from, with the same organization. She has background in title. She's a title examiner for 20 years. She's used to looking at plats and surveys and all this stuff. So I thought she might be a nice addition with some working knowledge. But if the board thought that that would not be a good idea.
Mr. Ayers, did you have a comment or?
No, my only concern would be if, you know, you had to recuse two people for a case and we had a short board, but, you know, going to be in those kind of situations, I don't think it would be a problem.
Well, that's why I asked. I've served, I believe, on the board for four years now and I've never had to recuse myself as of yet, but I'm happy to keep looking because in the interest of getting our board more filled out, it is definitely a priority.
Mr. Vig, did you have a comment?
Only that it seems to me that it's more likely that we would be staring at a short board situation if we don't bring this candidate forward than we would by having a conflict of interest declaration. We have, well, I have busy schedules and it's hard for us sometimes to, you know, have six people show up, so I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I agree. And I believe the numbers have been slanted. I think there used to be four or five attorneys. I think right now we're at two. So one more would still keep them in the minority. I think we could-
She's actually not an attorney.
Oh, that's even better than-
Yeah, she's actually a normal person.
Okay, okay then. Well, then heck, that's not even an argument on my part then.
So I will continue to woo her in addition to looking for other members because we have a total of two vacant spots, is that what I understand? Okay.
Through the chair, I'll send Stephanie the link for the application. And I'll also let the administration know that you guys were in favor of a coworker. Okay, thank you.
That would be great. Are there, thank you, Ms. Aiker. Are there any other comments by any of the staff?
No.
If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Yes, Ms. Aiker, you've, and Ms. Dole, you've seconded?
Yes, thank you.
Any objection? If not, we are adjourned.